Call this meeting our town council order at 7:03. Yeah, I bring this one in. Real call.
George Knoll.
Eric Purdon.
Sean Harley.
You're delighted to send us.
Derek Jones.
Nathan Mullany.
Show that Eric's need is absent. Or not Eric, Randy's need. Our right to president.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from 7:20, 22.
Sorry.
And a motion to second to pass the minutes for our town council meeting on July 20, 22. Any discussion? I have one correction. Is that possible?
Yeah. Can you pass him with the correction?
Yes.
What correction?
Just the under, where Citizen Robert McMillan paragraph starts there and said that I would get all of the change. Kind of missed a little bit in there because I believe that my statement was that once we get to town books and drive there, then we would see what we want to do about these chickens. That kind of makes me think, I left it wide open there. Think that should be kind of stated in there. So a motion to pass the amended minutes, minutes? I need a motion. A motion to second, all's a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Absolutely. Blue Zones presentation.
If you remember back, it's been a few months, I gave you a whole bunch of information on Blue Zones. So you are now up to speed and know everything I know. I'm not going to talk. Lindy Odger has all the information, is going to give you a nice presentation.
All right.
They're happy because I'm not going to talk.
And I can give you a two-page summary. And if you, I have the full packets. If you want to copy, I can give you a hard copy as well. Two pager might be more powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time this evening to talk about Blue Zones. This is a project that actually started when we began working on Stellar in 2018. And so I was asked to be one of the co-chairs for the Health and Wellness Committee along with Trixie Fox from Culver and Scott Graywell from Brumman. And yes, we worked on that. You know, we didn't get it in 2018, but we were successful in 2019. And I'm pretty excited about all the projects that we see going on across the county, including several down here in Argus too. We love the town with the park and all of it. You've been able to accomplish through funding sources like that in regional cities and others. So our charge with Stellar application was to come up with a project that would change health outcomes in Marshall County, health and wellness outcomes with $75,000. And they said, don't, you know, just reward people for who are already doing, you know, healthy habits, but find something that really will really make a change for communities. So we started looking into that. That's kind of tough. That's a big charge with $75,000. So, but we started looking into it. We recognized that there are hospitals, free hospitals, they're serving Marshall County that are doing wonderful things. But all of those hospitals have to do a three-year, every four years, do a community needs health assessment. And those health assessments are showing the same numbers over and over again, you know, challenges that we have in our communities. High diabetes rate, high obesity rates, high smoking rates, that are putting our population at risk for chronic illness. And then we started looking at our life expectancy. It's declining. It's getting lower rather than increasing. And as we look at the state of Indiana, we know that we rank 39 out of 50 states in some of our health factors. And in Marshall County, we slipped from a 61 out of 92 counties down to 64. So our numbers are getting worse instead of better, despite the good work that's going on within the hospital systems and the initiatives that they're trying to do. So when we talked about, you know, what it's, what it's going to take, we were looking for something that was system-wide, community-wide, that had measurable results and that was proven that it was working in other communities. We don't want to be first out on this. We want to know what works in other areas that are similar to us. And so that's, the first we heard about Blue Zones was actually through Ogra, through our representatives down there that were in contact with some of the Stellar project. And they mentioned it and we started looking into it. So Blue Zones was actually started about 20 years ago by Dan Mutner. He was commissioned by National Geographic to look at communities across the globe that had a higher concentration, higher concentration of people that were limited to be 100 or more. And to go to those communities, he'll learn what he could about what was different, about their lifestyle and their culture that was increasing their longevity. So he did that. He came back and he wrote several bestselling books. But since then, they said, all right, let's take that, see what we can do to develop a framework that helps communities across the U.S. do the same thing, adopt some of those things that help us live longer, healthier, happier lives. So that's where Blue Zones began. They started with a community much like ours in Albert Lina, so that population is relatively the same, demographic is a lot like ours, manufacturing was key to their communities and so on. And they were the pilot community and they've had some pretty incredible results with it. So we were interested in learning more. We first had Tony Mutner come in and talk to us as Dan's brother, come talk to us in, I think it was February 14 of 2020. And we went to Swan Lake during a winter advisory day. It was bad.
Every time I've been there, it's been a water break.
About 120 people that signed up. I think most of those folks made it that day. So, and we were encouraged. We did a survey afterwards. We learned a lot both before the program and during the program about what Blue Zones was all about. And we were encouraged when we did a survey that said 88, 90% of the folks there wanted to learn more about it and do something in Marshall County that was going to start to help improve our health outcomes. Let's look at this. So we took that and we decided to interview, well, COVID hit right after that, so that kind of stalled things for a little bit. We picked it up later that year and decided that the next step would be to interview four communities that had gone through the process. And we wanted different stages, people who were at different stages of it. And all of that's in the report, including the links. You can listen to the recordings of those interviews that we had. And we wanted to ask the hard questions. What would you do differently? You know, what kind of outcomes are you having? Would you do it again? All of those kinds of things. And overwhelmingly, all of those communities said if we had to do, had to do it over again, we would start earlier, we would invest more upfront. And every one of them said, and if you think you can do this on your own, you're wrong. So that was interesting. And after that, we decided we got sponsorships together. United Way, the St. Joseph Health System, Inslola College, Community Foundation, Dr. Stolson, Dr. Schumacher. They all supported a community readiness, the community development readiness assessment process with Blue Zones. So we hired a team to come in in 2021. And part of the process is it was, that team came in, we wanted to learn more about the Blue Zones process, but they also wanted to learn about Marshall County. Because the way this works is a lot like Stellar. They don't, you don't just pay them the money and then they give you the designation. You have to earn it. So it would take three years and eight months for us to earn that designation. That's what we found out through this process. But there's an evaluation that takes place with that community development readiness assessments. They're checking us out too, because they're not going to sign a contract with us if they don't think they're ready. Doesn't do them any good to see a community fail, right? So they were testing us as much as we were testing them. And we went through all that, focus groups, keynote speakers, CEO executive briefings. We did three days worth of activity with them. And then did some virtual things. After they left, we did some additional virtual focus groups. They even ran in a built environment. Expert Mark Fenton spent time in each of our communities a week or so later, just spent some time with us, looking at the built environment, making some suggestions right after that, things that we might look at to improve our communities and how we move more naturally. Do we have sidewalk ordinances? Do we reinforce them? Do we have trails and things like that that are helping people get where they need to go? I'm kind of love that stuff going on. Yeah. So that was part of the process. And obviously they came back and they said, yeah, you got high marks from leadership. We lifted up the Crossroads Team. Now, the Stellar Group officially formed as a regional planning team at that point. We made sure that they got real familiar with each other, Blue Zones and the Crossroads Team. And so high marks in leadership. They saw it across the county. You got great representation. I think we're ready. So they gave us a proposal to look at. And all along, we've been hearing about Ready. And we thought, well, that's an opportunity for us to not only invest our local dollars, but have some support and help, right? So we've been working since then to prepare ourselves for our Ready Grant application. And that's what we're doing right now, is looking for local match funding to help support the project and move forward with this next stage of it. So I, Blue Zones focuses in on three different areas, policy, key hall, and places. So policy is real key. We've got funders that are waiting in the wings to see what kind of support we have for policy change in Marshall County. And I got to tell you, having cities and towns in the county step in to support this with some funding, that sounds a huge statement to those folks that want to know if they have an appetite for policy change. And we've already seen some of that across the county. We're just real excited about the opportunity to bring in more experts to help along with that work. They focus in on places where people gather them. So in this process, we have worked to see that companies that are interested in becoming Blue Zone certified have a number of options that they can choose from. It's not one size can solve. It's here's, here's some options we think could help you become healthier, help your employees to become healthier. And as a result, build this healthier workforce, less absenteeism, increased productivity, longer time period within the workforce. That would be the goal with it. And reduce healthcare costs as a result. And it was interesting as we talked at, oh, I forgot, we also visited Albert Lina, took a nice trip there. And we talked to the community leaders, sort of very generous with their time and spent a full afternoon of this, answering our questions after we toured the committee in the morning. But they are alone, $8.6 million annual savings with their employers, who were seeing a reduction in smoking rates and having that constant impact on their healthcare costs. And our smoking rates are pretty similar to where theirs were when they started. And I think the one thing I left out too, I want to make sure you know, when we talk about this kind of change, I think sometimes it's intimidating. We think, wow, it's got to be, you know, 50% of our population doing something different. No, we can do this with 15%. That's all we need in order to see a significant change in some of those numbers. That's the projection. So that feels more doable. But anyway, Blue Zone certified companies, they work with the employers to see what that looks like. Schools, the same thing. So that's where a large percentage of our population goes today, right? Grocery stores, restaurants. We look to see if grocery stores have put in a Blue Zones aisle or section. Restaurants, maybe Blue Zones items. And again, making it easier for people to find those healthier choices and think about that as they're going about their daily, daily life. It's not about telling people you have to do this. It's about giving people general nudges all along the way, all sectors of our community moving in the same direction. So they're hearing it from multiple sources. And then the people aspect of it is that it really has to do with mental health. That's part of our wellbeing as well. And coming out of COVID especially, this is top of mind because we work with the Boeing Center and we know how long their waitlist is right now. We know that people are struggling. And we've got suicide rates that are alarming. We've got a lot of things going on. And part of what they do, or what this process is about, is about helping people identify what their purpose is, encouraging them to become part of a faith-based community. And that's all they, that's the only way that you find it. Because studies are showing that people who are regularly participating in a faith-based community live four to five years longer. Things like that. How are you connecting with people in, during your day? One of the businesses in Albert Lina, they put in pickleball courts and basketball courts so that their employees could get more activity before work, after work, on their breaks. But they also found that they were connecting with each other in a different way. They were actually doing some team building with that kind of activity as well. So it's all of those things combined, you know, that are leveraged together to make that difference. So that's a lot to take in. But that's why I gave you that two-page summary. Overall, the cost for this is $6.1 million over a three-year, eight-month period. It would involve hiring and training our local Blue Zones team. We're looking at five full-time equivalents for that. And it's really a train-to-train model. They probably don't, I don't think Blue Zones is really licensed when I say that, but that really is what it is to me. It's a train-to-train model. They bring in, we work with national experts to train that team. They work both in person and virtually with them over that three-year, eight-month period. They bring in, in addition to that, national experts, 131 days of national expert time with us, working specifically on issues we've determined locally will help us most in this journey. And then we build committees, volunteers that are in committees to address the people policy in places. And then building awareness and engagement with volunteers across the county. We are looking at another Ready Grant proposal, an e hub that will provide a space, like a landing space for these Blue Zones team. We want a very visible place and leveraging that and what the Ready Grant application for that e hub will help give us what we like to see there. So again, over the next decade, they're projecting we could save about $196.9 million in medical cost savings, greater workforce productivity, direct and indirect benefits to the regional economy, positive media and brand impressions locally, regionally, and nationally. And additionally, all the communities we talked to said this framework opened the door to them for a lot of other grant funding opportunities as well. A lot like Stellar. We were told the same and we're seeing that country with Stellar, the same would be true with this. This is what we're looking at. We've gone to Culver, Brumman, Plymouth. Plymouth and Brumman have committed 25% roughly of their ARPA funds. Brumman committed $100,000 to this project. That's about 1% of their, you know, sorry, a little more than that, about 10% maybe of their ARPA funds. Where we have a proposal before the county commissioners, we've asked for $525,000 in support. The commissioners passed that on money to council or review that. So we're hoping that we can submit that along with the application, the Ready Application that will be due, most likely on this project will be due in September. So, anything you can do to help support this? We know that makes a big difference for the county council. Is there anything that means? So anything you can do to help support this would be appreciated. We know that 25% of ARPA is a big ask. It does not have to be that, that figure. It does not have to be that funding source. It can be over a multiple year period if you feel you like. What do you got to do?
I think you got everything. I don't know we're quite to that point yet. I've talked with them. We're going through some financing stuff, obviously, because they're actually pretty hefty Ready apps we're looking at. So I'm sure we'll get with them and we'll get back with you. Like you said, this is going to be right there, doing a Ready portion for this. Those apps are due the 15th of August. So hopefully we'll get that portion put in with this. But by all means, I will, we'll talk some more and we'll get back in touch.
I will. I have questions.
If you have any, I was just going to say, do you have any questions?
I do. The town, in conjunction with our park department, which our park president is, I'm sitting down with Mr. Parkus there, the last few years, we've applied for and received and matched several grants to get what we're getting accomplished today. And you know, everybody owns funding in this. And we put hundreds of thousands of dollars into our own community. And I just was wondering if any of that could be like in-kind stuff? I mean, when we're done, this town is going to have walking trails that basically goes around this whole town. And I've just, you know, a lot of these grants and things and projects, you know, there could be in-kind improvements in a community that could be applied towards these cost benefits. And I was just wondering if there's an avenue for that within this program? I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not for what we're applying for to get the team in here. Probably not. Ready Grant though, however, Ready Grant. Anything that we have invested in Blue Zones up to this point counts toward the match. Anything invested since March of 2021. So every dollar that we spent on the community development and readiness assessment can. I don't know how far they'll let us stretch that down as far as, because this would be like the programming on top of the trails and sidewalks and so on, right?
As a town, as I look at it, we took an initiative upon our own community for ourselves to, to build out, to try to accomplish some of the same goals you're trying to accomplish with this program. And I just, you know, they kind of worked together. And I said, I know we put out $500,000 or better of our own money, I don't know what the exact number is, but to match grants to get where we're at today. And you know, that's a substantial investment just from our own coffers, let alone the investment from the other sources that gave us the grants. So I just, I just thought there should be some kind of a work in there to, you know, as a whole community, the county involved, to tie that together somehow, I would think.
That is a really good point. And something that we'll definitely make sure we come out in the Ready Application. So the applications that are due on August 15 are the capital expenditure projects. This one will be considered programming. So that application, we expect will open up within the next couple of weeks. And with the due date, we think of mid-September. So we'll have a little bit more information on what they'll allow us to count and not count toward the match. But honestly, I mean, you've got a really great point. I'm not sure that we've quantified for anybody, all of the investments that have gone into laying the infrastructure for this. We've talked about it. We've presented, when Blue Zones came in, we had a slide deck that talked about everyone, Stellar projects because of that. I'm not sure we had a little bit of this, your Stellar figure. So it's certainly something we want to look at. Because we still have to get past the South Bend, Alka Regional Partnership application process too. We think there's a good appetite for this at the regional level. They're looking at it. They like to see, we've heard some at the South Bend, Alka Regional Partnership talk about this being a pilot project for the region. Marshall County serves as that pilot for the region and maybe establish a bit later on. And the thing that I love, that I wanted to make sure I mentioned too, you know, we talked about that national branding. Blue Zones is going to be issuing another two, three books here shortly. Usually we do that stuff toward the end of the year to take advantage of the holiday market, right? But after the first of the year, they're also releasing a four-part Netflix documentary series on Blue Zones. The timing for us couldn't be better because we'd love to be able to get a Ready approval as they're launching that national attention toward Blue Zones. Because we can use that kind of energy both locally to help get people on board with these concepts, but also put Marshall County on the map as one of the latest, newest Blue Zones communities. And there's up to 70 now, across 70 across the U.S. now, that have gone through the Blue Zones process and transfer.
I personally think it's a good, a good program. I know people personally that could come down here from Plymouth and from Morecambe, even to visit our parks, walk on our trails, fish in our pond, you know, just because it's convenient. Like I said, those people I know personally, I know there's a lot more than that. I just driving around checking out town the other night and I seen a boy riding on a bike with three fishing poles strapped to his back and this. I mean, the community is using our arts and things that we've invested in here and it's great. And I just think that all this stuff should tie together somehow, should have some kind of a quantitative meaning, instead of just being a dollar value, you know?
True. You know, one of the things when we walked, when we drove through Albert Lina and stuff, so one of the things that they did, and Albert Lina was the pilot for Blue Zones and like 15 years ago. So this, they're in about the fourth generation of Blue Zones now. Again, not first community out. That's always good to learn from others. But as we drove through there, it was November, and we still saw people out on their trails, walking their trails in groups. Well, when they first started, they would do all these special events to encourage that kind of activity. They'd give them these, you know, bright colored t-shirts and they'd have contests. Some could walk the most and all of that or most often and all of that. But what we saw was that that was still happening and they haven't done those kind of activities for years. But it's now happening organically. And that's, you know, that's the kind of thing that we want to be able to build on, take up the infrastructure that's here and just increase that awareness and opportunity for people in the community to take advantage of it. And by doing that, we're increasing our health outcomes.
I have to say that this, Blue Zones reminds me of a lot. I know, I think Mr. Masters back there might be able to remember too. But a few years ago, we did, in Plymouth, we did a one book, one community. And the book was, and I pulled it up because this is what it reminded me of, but this is where you belong. And it is the, you know, the art of loving where you live. And a lot of the concepts that you're talking about are, can be drawn from that book too. If you remember, there are a lot of things that just involve like connectedness for people and just weight markers and things like that. I think it's a good read for anybody who has any questions about along this line, what this might be about. But it ties in pretty well with it. But that's what it reminded me of. I don't know if you remember that.
No, I didn't warn you.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Great look, but it also goes kind of along with that. So there's value in it. And it actually does. I think this ties into it to make people who live in their towns actually love it even more. Yeah.
Community pride, absolutely.
Do we have any questions up here? George? I sat through that all the way. You should have taken.
Well, I thank you for coming down and spending some time with us. I think Mark was correct. I don't think we're quite ready to make a commitment to anything just yet. But I do appreciate the extra information and stuff and putting a face with what we're talking about. So.
You can ask a question?
Yes.
The question is, has the town committed its ARPA funds?
Yes.
A good share of them, yes, already have been committed to
Water.
To water and sewer projects. A lot of them mainly for our new housing condition.
No.
No?
It's committed, actually, we're almost out. We did 100, so we did probably a third of them to assist an economic downturn. There were some points there we could use. A majority of them are going, we're going to have a water, virtually a water expansion update that we're going to apply through Ogra. And we're going to use those as the matching funds we need. There's always certain things we could use those for. We had already actually committed before she said that. They just tried to use ARPA funds because that was one avenue of getting funds for that. That doesn't mean that that's the only funding we had. So I mean, I'm sure we'll see what else is available.
Originally, we're going to use it for deer fields.
Well, I listened to that for, well, full disclosure, I listened to something on the radio about that. I got to tell you, this project seems to be very low on specifics on what it does. It's asking the taxpayers of the county to put in 1.22 million. The Ready Grant, I think, is 1.22 as well. And I think the balance is allegedly coming from private. But the taxpayers are in first. The Ready Grant's not in hand. And there's no commitment I see from industry or anybody else. You know, I don't know, Marshall County Foundation's got $44 million in dominance in 2021.
The problem with the Ready, this time around, I'm not sure why they did that, but they virtually, the Ready funding is actually ARPA funds that the state got.
So that's still taxpayer money somewhere, isn't it?
But in that, so the first time we got what you'll hear, regional cities, you heard her made that comment, the governor did the same type of thing, but that money was virtually, I don't want to say no strings attached. So this time- So this time, and so when we apply for these ready grants, the breakdown, as you said, is 20% municipal funding, 20% ready funding, 60% private funding. Well, that shoots a lot of my municipal projects right in the foot, because I don't have, I mean, to do a park project, I'm not gonna have 60% of private funding. So when you're saying, that's how they kind of have tried to get, like she's saying, so your private funding in this could be anything from the hospitals to.
Yeah, but who's committed to that? Nobody's committed to that, is my point.
Yeah, and so just because, and I'm, the same thing, I mean, I've got a ready project, I don't think we're gonna submit this specific one, but that was like $7 million. So our portion of it would be 1.4 million. So then I would get the 1.4 from ready, but the 60% of the private, I may not have that yet. I could have got awarded that, that doesn't mean that I would have truthfully followed through that project. So in that, in that funding, virtually, they said, there'll be projects that are funded that may never come into fruition. Obviously, that's not what they want, because they want the money to be used, but, but yes, in this situation, I, I know they've spoken to many donors, but.
But you also, most of the time, you're getting tangible assets. You know, I can argue that what you spend on the downtown square, maybe too much, whatever, but you got building, you got something. Here, it's a framework or something allegedly, that's all I hear, generalities. I mean, you know, additions are prominent, are you hiring mental health counselors in the county? Are you gonna have remote trailers maybe that you go to underserved? It just seems to be this brand, hey, we're a Blue Zone committee. I'm gonna bring in all this other people to build off because of our distinction. Sometimes that works, but it's not really putting boots on the ground. You know, are you giving to the food pantry, are you getting, you know? I gotta tell you, there's, you know, I think that one of the Ogra projects, or in Culver, you know, they did some sidewalk work. You know, it seemed like they grabbed some private property, but regardless, when I go to Culver, I see more golf carts than I do people walk. There's some rich retirees probably walk. Should we all move more? We should. I think everybody knows what they should do. I mean, there's a lot of data out there, there's a lot of avenues to find out. I mean, if you're gonna spend 1.2 billion of taxpayer money, you know, from the municipalities, and you're gonna then, and the grant, I believe, you know, I think that's taxpayer money as well somehow, whether it come from Nebraska, Allen County. The other is, you got a lot of towns in the whole US, you've got 70 that have done this. That's like point 0000, that's not a great track. I'm not aware of anybody in Indiana, is there anybody in Indiana who's done it?
This would be the first in Indiana, quite a few in Midwest, Iowa, North Dakota, I believe. Interesting, the mayor's council and last fall, mayor's conference. And again, this is for larger cities, but they passed a resolution endorsing Blue Zones and the concepts and the frameworks for improving community health. The more we said, I mean, we, we do United Way and Community Foundation, and I'll tell you, I talk to people all the time that say, we're always fixing on this end, but what are we doing about the prevention? And this is one of those opportunities to look at what we've already done with the infrastructure, but build on that, that concept. Let's, let's, let's see what we can do to improve it before we get to the chronic illness, because we're paying dearly over here. And I know we're experiencing changes in our healthcare network. So before we get to this place where we've got some really, really hard decisions to make, what are we investing up here, in the preventative stuff?
Well, we've got some economic storm clouds on the horizon. My understanding is it's a million dollars in administration costs. That's just for the people to come in and to hire the staff. That's before you've even done anything, is that correct?
I'd have to look at the number, but that's over a three-year, eight-month period.
But you're gonna bring in some people from Blue Zone, and they're gonna train the trainers, as you said. I imagine, I believe, what I've heard, that's, those salaries in mass are gonna be almost a million dollars of the project.
I'll look it up.
Well, what is it?
I didn't bring it with me, it's in here, hang on just a second.
It just seems like it's a lot of money at a time we don't have it, and it's not specifically targeting what needs to be done. I think that, you know, I think the commissioners or the council just appropriated a freezer or something for the neighborhood center. It's $19,000, you're like, oh, it's quite a bit, but you know, if they get a lot of turkeys in, the need is there, I get it. But that actually puts boots on the ground, that targets it, you know? And you do have a walking path, that's great, but it's also, nothing gets more personal than one's health. You wanna run, you wanna run, you know, should we do better? We should, we know what we should do. But this just is like a framework, I, I mean, I just have never heard any proposal ever that never was specific. I mean, you know, and a million dollar admin cost to start out, to get off the ground, it just seems excessive. Thank you.
That's where I was going, I'm just kinda adding to what you're, that's where I was going with my comment about.
And you put in one, haven't you?
People already done, we put up half a million dollars of our own money to match grants, to put tangible assets in place that fits right into this. There ought to be some kind of credit for that, you would think. That, that's kind of where I'm going with that whole conversation, so.
In a sense, and what Sean is saying, and I would have to agree with him, we basically have, we were ahead of the game, and we're basically doing our own Blue Zone in-house by what we've done with our Parks and Recreation Department. I mean, not to take anything away from what you're doing, but what, what I'm saying is, I mean, I think that, you know, for some of the other communities that, that didn't move as quickly or as, as, you know, early on as we did, that maybe they're a little bit behind where we are, but I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we've invested as a town, and, you know, thankfully from the council, invested in our own community, provided those things, and actually, we are drawing from outside of our community to, to take part in those things. I mean, I think we've kind of done our own Blue Zone, if you will. So I mean, without, you know, all the.
At least a portion of it, Ed, I, I agree with where you're going.
And again, I mean, our, our projects that we've completed don't address everything that you're addressing as well, but I mean, it is a pretty good start, I think, for, for the preventative end, as where we would, would want to be.
And that's what gave us high marks in the leadership, yeah, absolutely. You know, Dr. Schumacher, I was on the radio with him one day, and he said, he's been a supporter of this, you know, from the start, and he said, you know, I can reach 1,200, 1,400 people a year, but that's not gonna change our health outcomes. And, and again, I, I go back to, we were really looking for something that had measurable results, and that's a part of this too, is, okay, we've got this stuff, but then, is it improving? I mean, we're still seeing the numbers go the wrong direction, so what do we need to do? How do we change that, that trajectory? What's it gonna take to do that? And then, Bowen Center, Bowen Center has been very supportive of this project as well. In our conversations with them, they want to become a Blue Zones company at every location that they have in Indiana, 26 locations. So they're very on board. He said they're actually redefining mental health in their own internal conversations, because they've recognized that our physical health has so much to do with our mental health. And so it's three of their locations there, now they're in clinics where they bring in physicians and optometrists and dentists. So it's, it's been an interesting conversation. It's hard to take two and a half years worth of stuff and present it all to you.
Well, we, we thank you for coming down and presenting this to us, and we will take it under thought, and I'm sure Mark will keep us up to date on some stuff there, but I, I would like some quantifying answers to some of the questions that we've had here as a group, and go down that road before we commit anything as a town, in my opinion.
One of the things that we've done in other communities, so we're absolutely open, available to meet with you, and have more in-depth conversation about what that looks like.
Thank you. Citizens input? Anybody? Ed? Paul? No citizens input? Old Business Attorney Report?
All right, two things to cover tonight, guys. One, I'm gonna take you back to the Beers property at 110 Logan Street. I know last meeting, we had signed estimate, I'm assuming that works progressing, but there was also an issue, your point was on.
Roof is done.
Roof's done, but I know there was an issue about grass and weeds. I heard, according to their attorney, that that was in essence getting worked on?
Yes, I would agree with that. I did take pictures with Cory on Sunday, as I indicated through the council last meeting. I do have pictures, and I apologize, I haven't had time to get them up to the rest of the council yet, but I would agree that there has been some work going on. With that being said, there's still, in my opinion at least, plenty of work that needs to be done. I will get those pictures out so everybody can kind of make a decision on the road of what that looks like and.
What is the certificate of release?
It's for the building permit for the roof, it just means that it is complete.
Okay, so the roof's taken care of?
Uh huh, so he says, I mean, he just brought me that, so.
Okay.
Still, I had to touch it, as there's some days though.
Okay, well, he got a certificate of release, release from the Marshall County, you know, and he said that it was because the roof is done. And he showed me the figure of 19, well, some thousand dollars, and he said that's what it cost him, so.
I haven't been invited since Sunday, so I can't speak to it.
I would leave it here that if there needs to be any further steps taken, let's be specific about what they are, and then I can communicate those to, Andy Perkins is his attorney's name. But I would recommend, obviously, tonight, we don't know what's going on, and where are the others, so we're not much we can do. But I would say, let's have representative council, code enforcement, whoever, take a look. And if we're, we're good, we can close it. If not, there's more things that need to be done, then let's let them know. But I, I think it's appropriate to say that he's responded and he's done some things here that were requested of him.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, like, like I said, Sunday, I don't believe anything was done to the roof. As a matter of fact, I seen a hole in the patient board still, so. But that's not saying something hadn't been done between now and then.
So I'll just bring this back to the next meeting, and hopefully somebody can give an update as to where things stand, with the other issues that were, are concerned about the weeds and the vegetation.
And I will get those pictures up to the rest of the council, get here in the next couple of days, and we'll go from there.
Okay. The other thing, I, I started to look into a little bit about the discussion we had last time about chickens, and then turned into kind of animals in general. And I'm, I'm the last guy that's gonna wanna say, hey, let's have a workshop, but unfortunately, I think we need to have a workshop, because there's things, when I look through the, it's the zoning ordinance, I call it land use development code, but it's really the zoning ordinance versus the town council. And based on our discussion, I'm not really clear exactly what the objective is here from the council, because you do control both of those governing doctrines. And we do wanna make those consistent, but I think we're gonna have to put a little more time thought into this. When I look at our land use matrix in terms of, in a two-mile jurisdiction, I, I see property that's zoned ag and animal production, or even limited use animal production is a special use, which I can't believe would be the intent. And so maybe I'm mistaken, but again, I think it's something that we need to take a little better look at before we just go, me rewrite this, that, and the other. I think it'd be good to get a real good feel for what you guys wanna do. I'm not saying it has to be the next meeting, but it is something I think we need to look at this a little more.
We discussed that last night, plant commission. Some of this stuff, what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Streamlining it, I guess, more color?
Yes.
Who discussed that last night? But we were waiting on what you just said.
Well, and again, I don't, I'd rather tackle all of it instead of piecemeal it, and we keep finding little bits and pieces, but I'd rather get a better view of it from where things are as I see it. And again, I can point, not just chickens, but I, again, the guy that's, you know, a mile and a half out of town, he decides by 20 acres, it says, animal production is a special use, which means he has to go in front of a plant commission to get an approval to do that, which I can't believe was the intent.
I thought that was just for CFOs and that.
It's not, no, that's my point.
Okay, that was the general intent when the book was written, I do know that.
I believe that.
Pardon? Right after the moratorium, is that what you're talking about? Nothing to do really with the moratorium.
No, it was in production before the moratorium, but.
Correct.
You know, we used the moratorium to try and stall, but we were trying, it actually came up after the thing on 18th Road.
Yeah, but this was, I mean, our, when we did the zoning ordinance and adopted that, it was supposed to be a comprehensive, hey, this is the way we like it, and when I really look at that, I see some things that are like, I don't think that was what was intended. So again, I think we need to maybe just take a look at that again. It might be a good idea to have Chuck involved with that, so I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just gonna ask, Derek, do you feel that this is something that we should probably tackle in a special meeting for just that purpose, instead of the one we normally do for a town? I'm asking, does it take longer than an hour to do? I'm kind of gathering, should we plan like another night, or we can spend some time?
Well, I guess, I guess I would say this, I think the first step is to point out kind of some of the issues and problems. I don't expect solutions right then and there necessarily. I think it may take some time to think those through. And so unfortunately, I'm envisioning that it may take a little bit of time, effort, and work and means. I think the first one would be kind of like, hey, look at what we got, everybody else look at this too. And is that really what we intended, is that the way we wanna have things? And again, not just for chickens, but for.
I was thinking that when we did that, we did a special use, as you were saying, that that was our intent too. If it was already there, they weren't affected. But anything other than somebody already established would be affected.
Well, that's a grandfathering issue, and that may well be the case. Okay, if they're already there, well, we gotta leave them alone. But I'm saying, again, the guy that buys a piece of property that's a mile and a half outside of town, it's zoned ag, and it's just, say, bare vacant ground, he builds a house and says, I wanna have, I wanna have five pigs and two cows.
There should have, I thought we did that and put a stipulation on the numbers.
It's a special use. And again, he's, he's not in the town corporate limits, okay? So we don't look at the town code of ordinances, but we look at the zoning ordinance, and we see that an agricultural within that two-mile is a special use. So he's gotta come before the plant commission to get approval to have five pigs and two cows, or whatever he wants to do.
I'm almost positive that was, that's what, I, I mean, I really thought that was it, because we, we, we knew that we had a handful of farmers already within the two-mile area that had X amount of animals. And so we, we did that for that reason.
And that may be the case, and if the council says, no, leave it alone, it's just what we wanted, okay. It just, to be honest, surprised me when I saw that.
I thought the word production was where we decided that that meant CFO or CFO, you know, because it was a production, not just a regular farm. You know, it's not just somebody goes out buys, you know, three cows and two chickens and whatever.
Well, in any case, those, you shouldn't just use production as a generalized term for a CFO or CFO. Those shouldn't be stated as CFOs or CFOs. There shouldn't be a generalized, you know, production, that production be anything.
Rather not get into all of it tonight, so I think again, we need to probably have a meeting about, but there's animal production limited, okay, which is a smaller scale operation. But even that is a special use, and that's what I'm, I guess I'm getting at, is a, even a guy that wants one cow. So.
All right, what do you guys want, just, think you can put enough stuff together for us to take a quick look at, to the next one this month, the workshop, Derek?
Okay. I mean, I'm just basically.
Please give us a place to start. The way I'm hearing it, what I'm hearing tonight is, you know, we may have to involve more than just this council. You know, it sounds like plant commission may need to involve some in this possibly, and.
Yeah, I just, I was a little bit, again, kind of surprised when I saw that, but I wasn't sure that's what was intended. It would be surprising, but if that's what the council wants, or the plant commission and the council, okay. But then we also still have to tackle, what do we fix about chickens specifically?
Well, again, I'll stick to my original statement from weeks ago, that we need to make sure both of our books are in cohesion with each other, which they are not right now.
Right.
And that's, to me, that's our first goal, is to get things unified, and then we'll worry about chickens.
All right, the next?
Let's just plan to do that, if that's right with everybody else, at the next meeting or our workshop, go with whatever Derek brings us, and make a decision, we're gonna go with it from there.
What time do we wanna?
Uh, six.
The other two things that I have are really the next items of business under Old Business. The other two things that I have are really the next items of business under old business. Do you want me to go ahead and tackle those?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm gonna start with the Deerfield Estates, and this is, basically, this is a transfer of real estate from the town of Argus. These are all the individual lots. It's not the roads, it's not any of the, basically, I think there's a, um, retention pond area. These are only the lots that are proposed to be transferred to redevelopment commission. In order to do that, we don't have to, there's no money changing hands. Uh, we don't have to advertise for bids or anything like that. But we do have to do two resolutions, one from the council saying that we propose to, uh, have a deed that would transfer those lots, and then there's also a deed from the part of, I'm sorry, a resolution from the part of the redevelopment commission that says we accept the transfer of these parcels of real estate. Redevelopment meets next Tuesday. And I anticipate that they would execute their resolution, but then there's the resolution for the council to say, "We wanna go ahead and do this along with the deed." Um, I think that was a part of the packet?
Yes.
And?
Yeah, that's level, yeah.
That one.
This is Parks Department.
It's two thousand twenty-two dash eleven, correct?
Yeah, the resolution to transfer the lot.
There should be a deed attached to that. If not, I've, I've got it here.
I do not have that probably attached.
Oh, indeed, I have. It says Parks Department on it.
Right.
I'll turn that one.
They're identical.
You wanna handle this now? Need a motion to pass resolution number twenty-two-two dash eleven, a resolution of the Argus Town Council approving the transfer of real property?
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
A motion to second, pass the resolution number twenty-two-two dash eleven. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? Motion passes.
Okay. It is set up, and it does authorize, uh, Randy to sign the deed. Um, that's how the signature's set up as well, so I would just propose we would have him sign that.
Okay. He, he's out of town for about a week.
But you have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Derek, do you wanna sign this copy or your copy?
The resolution you guys signed.
If you've got the eleven typed, then go ahead and sign yours. I just handwrote in eleven online, and I made some. Stay signed the resolution, and the deed's been signed. You can get it back to me, and I can get it recorded.
Okay.
Or you can do it either way.
Yeah, I don't, either way.
Guys, the next thing that's on the agenda, it says quit claim deed, and, yeah, it should be quit, but it's quit claim deed for downtown square. And this was kind of a learning thing for me. I'm just gonna take one of these and pass it down. It's not the easiest to read, but it's basically the GIS beacon, uh, printout there of the map of the downtown square area. And obviously, this was years ago. But you can see there's two parcels up there that border Walnut Street that I put a P. Those are already owned by the park. There are, there's a parcel to the west of that where it says ARC, that's Argus Redevelopment Commission, that's owned by them. The one immediately to the south is owned by the redevelopment commission. And then there's two parcels below that are both owned by the town. Right now, in the picture that you see or the photograph there, um, there's a parking lot, and then basically a grassy vacant area below that. Those are both two parcels that are owned by the town. It's my understanding that the town is to deed those two parcels to the Parks Department, and also for the redevelopment commission to deed their two parcels to the Park Department, so that we kind of have a, a uniform ownership there of those. It'll be six parcels of real estate, all of which would be called or referred to as the downtown square. Um, and that's somewhat to also meet some grant requirements. Does that understand it?
Yes, I think this has just been our thought from the beginning. This will be another park property.
You hear the parking lot?
Yeah. I mean, 'cause it, the upkeep's gonna be obviously the town anyway, so there's not really a difference.
It's just smegs.
The main, I mean, I'm not saying what the main, just having it in park hands changes a few things, if anything would ever need done.
I think that the parking lot should probably be in the part of just reliability reasons, or if they add the farmer market stuff in that, I mean, it's just gonna have too many entities involved. You got one there, and they'll be town on top of everything.
And it all comes back to that, doesn't it?
Yeah, right.
So I just wanted you guys to be clear about which two parcels we're talking about here. There's, again, another resolution and another deed, um, that would effectuate the transfer of those two parcels to the Park Department. And again, there's a resolution for the Park Department to say, "We accept the transfer of those two parcels." Uh, once a deed signed, we get it recorded, and then that's, that's it. We also have in the works, just so you know, um, I've already prepared the resolutions for the transfer of the two redevelopment commission lots to the Park Department as well.
I'll get that to you, Paul.
We meet on the eighteen.
I already did, I think. Yeah.
Oh.
I said, he said, we do those two.
Okay.
We meet on the eighteen.
Yeah. I don't know, Paul, and I don't really matter, but I said I.
I am missing the resolution for this one.
Yeah, this is the one that Derek said that he was gonna bring forward.
Okay.
I gave you the deed, not the resolution, so.
Here's the resolution, and it's just handwritten in there, twenty-two, thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same resolution as Deerfield, just different properties.
We have resolution number twenty-two-two dash thirteen, a resolution of the Argus Town Council approving the transfer of real property. Do I have a motion to pass? I got a motion and a second to pass resolution number twenty-two-two dash thirteen. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? Zero. Motion passes.
And again, I set that deed up for the signature of Randy, so.
I'll get Randy. Thank you.
Do we need to, do you have this, or I need to pass this down to you for Randy?
He has that. Well, I can print another one, so you wanna keep it, that's fine.
That is all I had to report.
Make a motion to accept the attorney report?
I second it.
A motion is second to approve the attorney report. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? Zero. Motion passes. Old business. Any old business in there?
Got a question for Jamie. How are we on our dump truck in Polk?
I haven't heard anything about it.
Haven't heard of it now.
Yeah. I doubt I will for a couple of months at least on that dump truck, so.
Anybody else have anything?
You need to space it out a little bit more.
New business. Resolution twenty-two-two dash twelve, Altium Packaging CF-1.
So I got a call from the MCEDC that said that, um, Altium Packaging had sent their CF-1s directly to the auditor's office and did not give it to the town. They were supposed to have it to us by May fifteenth. Um, the auditor then denied the request. So I got a call from Greg at the MCEDC asking if we would forgive their error, um, in that they brought it to the county rather than to us. So I had to come up with a resolution to state that you would let them, what, let you?
You gotta do?
Yeah. And it, um, well, I, I played dryest one, so, but, um, I had to come up with a, a resolution to say that you, as the Argus Town Council, realizes that they made this mistake, and you will still accept the, um, tax abatement for this year. And then I have to file it again with the auditor's office.
Is this all nice and legal this way, Derek?
Well, I mean, here's the deal. It's a CF-1. It should've been turned in by May fifteenth. Apparently, they turned it into the wrong entity without getting it here first. I get it, that, I mean, it, it's not always clear about, they filled out the form, and you can see that it's stated May ten, but they turned it into the wrong entity. Um, I think this is year two. Is that correct?
This is supposed to be year two, but they did not claim last year, so we'll see how that goes.
Think regardless, it's year two, you know, whether they did or didn't claim, but at the end of the day, um, yeah, I mean, we can deny it, but I don't, I, I think the objective is, let's get business in here, let's get new equipment, let's get jobs, and that's what this helps to do.
This was a simple mistake.
So do we even need a resolution?
We have to have the resolution.
We do. This has to go to the assessor's office once it's passed, so they can recognize the abatement.
Make a motion to pass resolution number twenty-two-two dash twelve, waiving noncompliance regarding timely filing for Form CF-1 for Altium Packaging LP.
Second.
A motion to second, pass the resolution number twenty-two-two dash twelve. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? Zero. Motion passes, unanimous. Are these just the forms then? Do we have to do anything with these?
Uh, Randy will sign, you know, once you guys have, you know, he'll sign that it's in compliance, and then I'll take them to the auditor's office.
It's really the CF-1 form.
Yeah.
There, Sean, and it's the second page where it says signature of authorized member, and then Lisa passes it.
Can Sean sign it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sean, you can sign it.
You want these on?
Just where it says authorized member and that they're in compliance? If you want, we can do it after, and Derek can show you.
Yeah, 'cause I've not seen it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Next up, I believe we have allowance of debts to be written off due to bankruptcy collection fee under the minimum amount. Lisa?
Yes. So, um, Lori has done these about every six months. We're down to minimal collecting now. Um, she's collected about everything that she can, I know it's not on here. Um, she's collected about all that she can collect. Um, so these are, either the person died and we have to write it off, or the collection agency has collected and they have charged a fee, and so we have to write off a portion of their balance due to that, or we just could not collect, or anything under, we have a threshold of, I think it's twenty-five dollars. Anything under twenty-five dollars, we're not gonna spend the time and energy to try to collect. But I will tell you, she did put on there, I think we collected something like sixteen thousand dollars to date through Trex and through our collection agency. Um, she's done a great job doing that. And Trex has really helped out. And we're talking people that have owed us money from like the eighties. So, we were able to go way back and, and collect them. And Trex, um, according to the, um, vendor that I talked to at our last clerk's training, they're trying to get federal permission to go after people's federal taxes now. So if you owe a municipality or somebody, a non, a municipality or a school, something like that, um, you would be able to use Trex to track them down. So now you won't, it won't matter if you move out of the state of Indiana. Um, they'll still be able to, once that gets federally passed.
So I have a motion to pass this for a total of a hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents of debt write-off?
I need motion. Second.
I have a motion to second to pass debt, debt write-off of one sixty-one forty-eight. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? Zero. Motion passes.
Angie, how did you always start out first on your last sign?
We learn.
I had a really nice person sitting next to me when I first started.
Well, it looks like we're up to claims now, I believe.
Before we go to claims, I should've jumped in on citizens' input, but this weekend at the park, uh, park department's hosting, uh, Slide the Hill. So it'll be, uh, we had a, a local farmer donate, the plastic to cover the sledding hill, and so it'll be soaked up and watered up for the, for the community to come play.
That's the best thing I've ever seen.
That's pretty cool.
This is gonna be so great. I'm gonna fly so far.
We did it last year.
You're saying that.
Before COVID, it was, it was great. Uh, and I wanna throw this out there. Uh, I just, I have to deal with this, but your nonprofits now, the state of Indiana, I believe it was in June, passed the law that any nonprofit that made over twenty thousand dollars must now collect sales tax. So when you see these nonprofits out there selling their chicken, doing their fish dinners, doing their whatever, if they make over twenty thousand dollars a year, they have to pay sales tax. So take it into consideration that they're not doing it, the state's pushing it. So it's really reaching into monies that they are actually turning back into the community. Not that they're keeping it for their self, it's all, all for the community, so. Just to let everybody out there know, that's why prices are up.
Pretty shady, if you ask me.
George?
Yes.
Which is the fire thing next weekend?
Thirteenth.
Yes, next.
Sorry, next weekend, thirteenth.
Same as the epilepsy walk as well, that'll be at the park.
Yep.
Sean, I have one more thing if you don't mind.
I just wanted to see the reporters.
Scratch.
It's a short thing. So we talked about the Christmas party, the employee Christmas party last time, and we said we'd make a decision this meeting. Um, I honestly didn't look very far. Um, by the time we hired janitors or, you know, I, I mean, are you gonna make the employees set up and clean up and do all that stuff on, you know, for their own employee appreciation dinner? Yeah, just me. You know, so, um, I would just like permission to have it back at Christos for one more year, if you guys wanna start looking around. I understand you wanna keep it local, but by telling me you hired bartenders and caterers and all of that, it's really hard to do that, so.
I gave this quite a bit of thought, Lisa, after our last meeting, to be honest with you, and I just kinda jotted some things down. You know, I would love to keep it in the community, I really would, but as I just put some rough figures down, it's like, I, I don't think that we would be doing the town's people justice. To spend that much extra money, you just have something we could get for half of the price in Plymouth. I mean, we're still within the county. The county is our seat, and I get it. I'd love to stay in the community, but I feel that we should go back to Christos myself, so.
I mean, we'd even have to have liability insurance and all this other stuff if we had bar and tender. You know, I mean, it's, it gets quite, when you start adding everything up. So. Or the AZDZ could host it for us. Hold it down.
We were going to take our, we were going to take our, our response, or?
Yeah. We're flush with.
I moved that we just do the Christmas party, appreciation party. I'm still calling it Christmas party, 'cause that's what I feel about it, but, um, for employees, as we did last year at Christos, if I can get a zoom.
And motion, you got a second? A motion second to hold the employee appreciation dinner at Christos again this year. All those who have it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And ayes? Zero. Motion passing unanimous. Claims.
Sure is nice having the claims in the right direction.
No kidding. About passed out.
You're that, so I guess.
It's so nice when you have people that don't wanna use computers.
I know, so there you go. This is the first time she's been right all year.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm waiting for Lisa to tell us what the claim was.
So the claims are $487,843.21, and they run from July 16th to August 1st. And these meetings that are August 1st, these are very hard to get the claims done for, I just wanna let you know, because you have to close out a month and try to start a new month in a day, so. Second and fourth meetings would be great.
Got a motion to pass the claims for 7/16 to 8/1 totaling $487,843.21?
I make that motion. Second.
And a motion to second to pass the claims for 7/16 to 8/1. All those fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? No nays? Motion passes, will they turn? Before we do that, before we do that.
They always tell me no.
I would like to express condolences, not only for myself, but on behalf of the town as acting president tonight, for the loss of the lives today of Jackie Walorski and her staff and the other lady that was involved in the accident. It was a terrible thing that took four lives today, and I just want to let the families know that they're in our thoughts and prayers. Now I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. Second.
A motion to second to adjourn, and all those fairies, aye?
Aye.
Ayes? No ayes, of course.